So I guess I'll officially open the meeting and ask, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Ms. Karstharfen?
Here.
Ms. Backs?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
And Mrs. Sequen?
Here.
Okay, all board members are here. Madam Treasurer, would you please show us our virtual flag? And everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
There it is.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice. Okay, thank you, Madam Treasurer. And boy, I never knew having 12 people do the Pledge of Allegiance in virtual was such a hard thing to do. But, okay, so here we are. Welcome to the August 19th, 2020 Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group. Usually to my right is our board member Jim Backs. To his right is board member Elaine Sequen, when we're meeting in person that is. I am Greg Elick. To my left is our Vice President and Board Member Annie Karstoffen. To her left is Mike Gebhardt, who is out in the woods right now somewhere. To his left is our Superintendent Anne Schloss. And to her left is our award-winning Treasurer, Joy Clickinger. So welcome to the meeting. Madam Treasurer, I believe we do not have any presentations or visitors today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we'll move right into Board Member Discussion Items. And the first thing I would like to bring up with this group is that we have discussed about meeting in person. And our Treasurer and Superintendent, it was working with our attorney Howard Lane, who just happens to be running a little bit late here today, but he should be on any time now, with documenting the proper procedures that we're going to use moving forward when we meet in purpose with a target date of sometime in September. I was told today by our attorney Howard Lane that this is actually something that should be voted on. I was not aware of that. So what that's going to do is we sent out the information today. So I would ask all board members to please spend some time in the next week or two and look at that, feel comfortable. If they have questions, they can ask our Treasurer Superintendent about it. And then be ready to vote on this new procedure for in-person meetings on our next meeting, which is on September 2nd.
2nd.
So we will do one more virtual meeting on September 2nd and vote on these procedures. And if these procedures pass for face, for in-person meetings on the 16th, and we will come back and have our meetings according to these policies and procedures. Does that make sense with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
And I was going to have Howard Lane, who I don't believe is on.
No, he's not.
Talk about it. But Joy or Anne, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Well, what I'd like to say initially is there were, you know, there's always things you don't think of. And the first thing that we needed Howard to get or give us an opinion on is the fact that can we, if somebody wants to stay virtual while we're doing in-person meetings, can that happen? And that's part of the reason why we need to vote on it, because we didn't specifically address that in the initial resolution. The initial resolution was just to get us to virtual.
Okay.
So he believes that yes, we can, and so do I. So if we met in person and say, I don't know, Elaine was, had contact with somebody within, you know, a 14-day period, she wanted to join us from home. She could not only join us, but she could be part of the quorum and vote.
Oh, good.
Some of the other questions were whether we had to wear face masks. And of course, we do coming in. One of the questions that we're kind of waiting on at this point is do we have to wear them while we're seated six foot apart in front of an audience that is 10 to 20 feet away?
Okay. It looks like as of now, the way this is written, that there will not be an audience according to the government, to the governor's rules. Is that correct, the way it's written right now?
The way it's written, yes. But that is a point that Anne and I need further or ask for further review of, because we believe that you can do that. As a matter of fact, we have been doing that with certain professional development and other meetings if you're spaced out and everybody still has their mask on.
Okay, good. So this is a work in process. Hopefully, within the next few days, we can get these unknowns tightened up. And then I did send a copy of this for the record to the board members so you can believe, begin, excuse me, reviewing it. And if you have questions, you can directly go to Howard, to Joy, or to Anne. But as of now, the schedule is to vote on this on the 2nd and then start our meetings in person again on the 16th. Superintendent Schloss, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Just that Mr. Lane is working with Dave Cavell. They were in touch today to give you guidance so that it was approved by the Department of Health, the local Department of Health, as the governor does ask for us to do.
Good.
So that's the only thing to add.
Okay. Board Member Questions or anything on this? Nope? Okay, moving along on Board Member Discussion Items. I'd like to get the ball rolling. It's probably, I've been, a number of people have reached out to me about our back-to-school plan, as I'm sure it has happened with everybody in this meeting. And obviously, I've had people that don't support it. Do you support it? Don't support this part, or don't support this part. But I would like to say that I believe our team that has thought of this plan, administrators and educators, have done a wonderful job. I think it's a great plan. We have a nice mix between virtual education and a hybrid education. And I don't think our hybrid education model is over the top. The two days, I think, really makes a lot of sense. And I am just so happy that everything that's been done with the team that's come up with this plan. So Board Members are...
I think they did a great job. I think it looked good.
I think there was a lot of work and attention and consideration placed into the planning. And I've looked at it from different perspective. And I've had different parents to ask questions. And I think we were given enough information, enough information, questions very, you know, precisely as well. And I appreciate that very much also. But yes, I think they did a very, very fine job.
Good.
So appreciate it, yes.
Would agree, would agree with Annie. She said it nicely, agree.
And also too, that's a good point by Board Member Karstoffen. I think our Superintendent gave us a lot of the information. Almost made me feel like I was in those meetings. So I do feel, you know, very well-equipped to be able to discuss this with the general...
We have to understand, Greg, that, I mean, with Annie, as thorough as this was, and it is, that you can't ever issue a 100% guarantee of anything. And especially, I mean, when there's people involved, you have a number of random elements. And, but I think from an overall standpoint, I mean, I think it was about as thorough as you could possibly be. And still have it, and still have it be workable. And it's not, and it's going to be difficult at best, even the way we're going, just getting started. And there's going to be a lot of, there's some unknowns, certainly. And I think there's still a reasonable level of anxiety. But I think, you know, when there's unknown, a lot of unknown situations or expectations, you're going to have, yeah, you're going to have that level. And I, you know, and I'm just hoping that we get a, you know, get a pretty decent startup. And I think that will, that will go a long way to ease some of the anxiety. Not that everything is going, not that that will dispel everything, certainly not. Because we are dealing with, we are dealing with something that's fairly serious. And I think, you know, it's important that we, that we do everything we possibly can to adhere to the, to the, to the protocols that Dave Cavell has put out there for us. I think, I think what he's done is completely reasonable under the circumstances. And, but I think, you know, and I think it's thorough. So, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be interesting. It's going to be interesting on the startup to, it looks, you know, it's great on paper, but boy, getting it, getting it all, getting it all together and working when you have just people involved is, is going to be the challenge. And so...
Well, it certainly does look that we have followed all the protocols by the County Health Department.
Sure.
And my only thing I would add to that is that I think in general, we're living during a time where there's a lot of anxiety about the pandemic. And, you know, just simply going to the grocery store can, you know, elicit anxiety. And so everybody has to get a comfort level. And I really think that the way this plan was formulated, there's a lot of good people that worked on this. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to get the kids back in school. So Superintendent Schloss, did you want to add anything to this here discussion?
Just, just one thing. And as you know, we continue to work on the plan. We, we don't, it's not done because of this. Every day, there's something new we learn. And I do want that, that to be known, because we're constantly, I probably talked to Dave Cavell four times today. But also that we've met, and Denise Bled is heading this up, we've met with the social workers and counselors now three times. And we are developing something for both parents and staff, that we have something for students and staff and families in the mental health platform because of the anxiety and fears that are going on around all of this. So understand that we do know that that is a real thing. And we are going to support everyone in that way also, just to address that. Because that is real, and, and we know that. So just to, to put that in there too, that that is something we have worked long and hard on also. So that is coming. We have a meeting with, with attorneys coming up this week to know how to serve in the mental health capacity with all these entities and people so that we can support all of our, our people in this area.
Good, okay. Any other, any other discussion items for the board members today that you'd like to share with us?
I think we have a coach we're going to miss. Mr. Fennick, he'll be very missed after 30 years. We, I hope we can find somebody good to replace him.
Yeah, it's sad, the end of an era with Coach Fennick. And I think everybody in the community and the schools and all the kids will definitely miss him. He's had such a positive impact on the softball program and the kids. And he will be truly missed. Thanks for sharing that, Board Member Gebhardt. Any other Board Member Discussion Items? Okay. With none, we'll move along on the meeting to the minutes. The minutes from the August 5th, 2020 meeting have been posted. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by, I think it was Board Member Gebhardt. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstharfen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Madam Treasurer, do you have action items for us this evening?
Yes, I do, just a couple. The first one is just the approval of the financial reports for July. And the second one is asking for approval of the purchase orders just to comply with our purchasing procedures.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Treasurer action items?
So moved.
Who'd approve?
I have a motion by, I will say, Board Member Backs, since he was louder and bolder. And a second by who?
I'll second.
Board Member Backs, okay. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Backs?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
Ms. Karstharfen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt? And Mr. Elick?
Aye, motion carries. Any other reports for us this evening, Madam Treasurer?
No, thank you.
Okay, we do have a little bit of an update under the OFCC. Our building liaison, Board Member Jim Backs, has an update. Jim?
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Everyone on the board, we received, you received your construction update report from Mr. Rigda two days ago. And in that, he mentioned two major projects remain to be completed to qualify a couple of our buildings for permanent occupancy permits. The most pressing of the two is the relocation of a 6-inch gas line that will permit the completion of the deceleration lane on Abbey Road at the entrance of the new Northwood facility. You might recall that that gas line was supposed to be moved already, but it turned out that it wasn't. And so in any event, that relocation, I had a report from the, from the onsite project manager this morning that he was confident that that relocation would be completed today.
Oh, good.
So with that being, that will, Mr. Murphy is confident that they will have that deceleration lane done in plenty of time to allow that, to be in that situation, in that position that we qualify, we can qualify that building for a permanent occupancy permit. The second, the second project is the parking lot and a water retention pond at the Ely, at the Ely site. That, we could have gotten started earlier, except there was a building sitting there, remember? And so with that building out of the way, that work too is progressing, is underway and progressing. Sean is, is confident that we are going to have that in place in time to meet the requirements for that occupancy permit, permanent occupancy permit. And gladly, there is no remaining projects, major projects at Hamilton that will prevent it from receiving its permanent occupancy permit. So as of today, it's our expectation that we, that we will receive all the permanent occupancy permits on time, which will allow us to open Northwood, Ely, and Hamilton, as we expect to do. So...
Oh, that's great news.
There, it's, things are moving, there's, so yeah, I mean, it's, so those two major projects, if we get those whipped, we should be in pretty good shape. Sean did tell me today that, that we should, he invited me to tour Hamilton this week again. He said, because it will look considerably different than it did two weeks ago when we, when the board toured it. So a lot has happened. I know that when we went through there as a, as a group, there was, I heard a comment more than one said, geez, there's a lot still to do. Well, there was. But they've done a remarkable amount of work in a short period of time. And so I think Sean is pleased with what's been done. And it's great, I mean, they got that punch list. If you see their, the minutes, their minutes of their core team, they have a punch list they go through. And, and that's the way you get it done. And so I think everything is looking pretty good right now.
Good.
Okay.
That's great news. Has there been any discussion about this sewer tie-in with the jet in that between the city and the commissioners? I, last, I think we heard that it was slowing the project down considerably. Is there any updates on, on that, Jim?
Other than, other than what Paul commented on in his, in his latest, in his latest report, I have heard nothing else. But it is, you know, you think about a project like that and, you know, digging out, the excavation and the installation of the pipe and all the things that have to go on, it appears that we are mired in paperwork, or the lack of paperwork, and not a question of lack of equipment or materials. And so one of those does include, and Paul mentioned this, we do have to get a final permit from the EPA because we are removing a lift station from that circuit and replacing it. So any modification will require, because it is a sanitary and it is an operating sanitary, will require their, their permits, their approval. And that the EPA can be, can be slow in providing responses, put it that way. So we're, so Paul is keeping an eye, a close eye on that. But obviously, that, if we can't hook the buildings, if we can't hook the buildings up the way we would like, that would be a problem. So that's, but we'll keep an eye on that one.
So stay tuned on that one.
Stay tuned.
Great. Any questions, Board Members, about the building updates?
Yeah. What?
Good update, thanks.
Up with the city on this, what's that?
Hi.
Yes, Mike.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Your bandwidth is low, but we hear you.
There was something about, there was something the city hadn't provided us in Paul's, his letter, something from the city hadn't provided us with the, what do I want to look, this legal description? What's the big hole up there?
That was a, that's, it's a title, Mike, that's a title description of the property that this district is exchanging with the city, where we're exchanging the Oakwood, Franklin, and McKinley properties for a piece of property at the, at the new Northwood site. The description of that piece of property is, I'm going to say, inadequate.
Well, here, I can comment on this, because I've been involved with this, unfortunately. Just for the record, we voted over a year ago to swap three properties for a, a little parcel of land over by Northwood. And we finally to the point where the city has everything in order as far as all the approvals between the city and the CIC. And now that we're finalizing the legal documents to sign, the legal description of the lot of land that we're receiving cannot be located. So they are in the process of trying to locate that and get the legal description of that land. And if they can't, I, I'm not an expert on swapping land, but I would assume they may need to have it surveyed and the legal description. But that's just another hurdle with this, this partnership that we're going through. But hopefully, we'll get that soon and, and get that tied up.
Well, I'm hopeful that turning that little issue over to, to a title company should expedite that.
Let's hope.
I have one question. With the, the temporary permit that we've received for the three schools, my understanding that that permit only allows for the personal property to be placed in the buildings, is that correct?
The staff, we can, we can allow the staff in to set up the rooms.
Yeah, to put their personal property into the room. So then, how much time would we need for the remainder, considering we're already at, you know, like, the midstream of August? Would it be enough time? Because you still have to have a permanent permit, correct? So how much?
That's to open it up for business. It can be completely, completely prepared from a, from a physical standpoint. The permanent occupancy permit is simply required to operate it as a, to operate it, to open the doors and operate it. But we could have everything, we'd have all the furniture in, everything can be ready under the temporary, with the temporary permit.
Do we apply for that now? Or, you know what I'm saying? Since we're running into such large hurdles on everything else?
We've got, we've got temporary permits on, I believe, all three.
All three, yes.
On our two properties. So as I understand it, we'll be moving furniture and a variety of things into those buildings this weekend or in some cases, or is, or next week?
So, so staff moved, all three buildings have the boxes in. Staff is moving into Ely today. And they move into Northwood and Hamilton on Monday. So their belongings are there already. So they're starting to set up the rooms today and Monday for those two buildings. So really, what they're working on now are punch list items in the buildings. AVG is going through and they're doing the, like, chipped paint and stuff on the wall where things got dinged and stuff like that. So I, to refer to what Jim said, we can get everything done. And that they gave, the city gave a list of things, a couple of things from what Sean said that had to be done to get the permanent. He's, he said, we have a core meeting tomorrow. And from Sean's email to us today, he said, boy, it's, it's going to be real easy to get the permanent. There were only a couple of things. And he felt very confident we'd have it in, in no time. So September 8th is the open for business for the staggered start. And he felt very confident.
Okay, good, good.
Good to know.
We've been, Brian and I have been calling him every day. Brian and I have been calling Dave Stoll and Sean every day just because we're nervous. So they're sick of hearing from us.
Well, has Brian got anything to do lately? I mean, is that, he's just calling him to hug him, or?
Oh, yeah.
If I can help with anything.
Okay. Glad to see you're on, Brian, and you're surviving in your wildest dreams. Did you ever think you'd be moving so many schools all at once?
I wish it was just moving the schools, but yeah. You know, it's good to be part of a good team, so it makes it easier.
Good deal. Well, we appreciate all the work you guys are doing on that. Any other questions for Board Member Backs on his OFCC report? Okay, and I see we're now joined by our attorney Howard Lane. And Howard, I just want to let you know that we did go over your procedures for the meetings, which I informed the board now. The face-to-face meetings will be the 16th with a vote on the 12th. And now that you've joined us here, is there anything that you would like to add about the procedures that you've forwarded to the board members?
If anyone has any input, feel free to give me a call. I will also let you know that we're going to be updating the proceedings
I will also let you know that I've got a call into the Lorraine County Public Health just to get their take on the protocols that I've drafted up. I'm hoping that they will be in a position to be able to approve public attendance at those board meetings and, you know, I'm hoping to have that conversation with them tomorrow, if not the beginning of next week.
Okay. Great. So feel free to contact Howard also directly, board members, if you have questions on these procedures. So thank you, Howard. Okay, back to the agenda. I believe we were under the OFCC report. Thank you, Board Member Bax.
Yep.
And now we'll move along to the superintendent action items. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Elick. First of all, under action items, I'd like to ask for your approval of the payment of stipends as listed below. Also, this is, as you can see, it's under grant work for the work we've been doing this summer and the equity and education work and some professional development. Also to approve the contract for the secretary at Open Door, one of our auxiliary schools. To approve the contract for the Special Olympics assistance. To approve the contract with the Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Murray Ridge Preschool. To approve the agreement with the Mental Health Addiction and Recovery Services. This is an annual approval. To authorize the disposal of the following, what we would call an obsolete truck owned by the Board of Education. It's no longer repairable. So we did get rid of that. Its value does not exceed $10,000 and that concludes my action items and my recommended actions.
Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent action items?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstafen. Any questions or comments?
What, what do you do with that truck? Just junk it?
Mr. Ko Kai, actually I think we, we got a little money for it, didn't we? We auctioned it?
Yep. We auctioned them and I'm sure it's in the scrap value of it, given its condition, but yeah.
Now, was that part of the Franklin auction or was it separate?
Um, I'm not sure exactly which auction. We ran over three this year, so I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head. I can't recall, I'm sorry.
Okay. Not a problem. Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have personnel action items for us this evening?
Yes. First of all, to approve the resignation of the following staff. This is a teacher from Early College resignation. Also to approve the appointment of the following certified staff member. You can see we're starting to hire some, you will see some, and, and apologize, we have to, this is that time of year, you may see some after Friday, you know, when the board agenda goes out because of late hires. So you will see some of the auxiliary tutors and substitute teachers here on the list. We do have around 50, I believe, right now. Also to approve the supplemental contracts, we did put all of the extended day times for our counselors, nurses, psychologists on. And then to approve the resignation of the following certified, or I'm sorry, classified staff members. To approve the one-year limited contract of the following classified staff. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff members. And that concludes my personnel items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Segwin. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent report for us this evening?
Yes, just two things. First of all, as you heard yesterday from the governor, athletics are on. We are working on a plan we met today and I think that we will have that very shortly. I, I do want to say this right now, unfortunately, I don't think everyone will get to come to the games, you know, and, and it's very, very prescribed as, as the governor did say for the safety of everyone. And this is about the kids getting to play and, and getting to have some of their most important people get to see them play. So we will put that plan out, as I told you, board members, we'll get that to you in the next day or so. As we work on it, we're still waiting for that guidance from the governor, but we're, we're going to get that to you in the next day and then we'll move from there. Also, we heard today from our last funder, but about two and a half, three weeks ago, sat down and talked to the Nord Center, the Nordson Foundation, the Stocker Foundation and the Community Foundation just to ask for their help with internet connectivity. And every single one of them came through and gave us $120,000.
Wow.
To help us with our family connectivity. So I wanted to publicly thank those four foundations, always coming to our, our side and partner as always. And with that and the state's help, we did ask for $250,000. We think that we will be able to hopefully go forward and not hopefully have any family that we can't help with connectivity. So keep your fingers crossed, good things happening. So thank you to those foundations for helping us out.
Thank you.
That is it. Me.
Great. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Very good job.
Hey, Ann, who were those, what were those four foundations again?
The Nord Foundation, the Nordson Foundation, Stocker Foundation and the Community Foundation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I can, I will send you all an email with the four ladies that I called.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Superintendent Slush. Moving along on the agenda to the Board of Education, it looks like we have to have a second reading and adoption of a policy. It doesn't list which policy there, but I believe it's the facial coverings. Is that correct, Madam Treasurer?
Ann, do you know? I think it is.
It is. It is, yes.
Okay. So I guess I would.
The second reading, yes.
Ask for the second reading and adoption to approve the new board policy regarding facial coverings. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Who to approve the second reading?
Okay. We'll say Board Member Segwin since she was first. She wasn't the loudest, but she was first. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Gebhardt. Any questions or comments on the facial coverage? With, with none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Also, under Board of Education, well, executive session, I don't believe we have any executive sessions planned for this evening. So I will ask the other board members, do they have anything to share for the good of the cause before we adjourn? With none, with none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion by Board Member Karstafen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Okay. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstafen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. We are all done, meeting over and just a reminder that we will be meeting one more time virtually on the 2nd. Please review your policy for our face-to-face meetings starting back on the 16th and everybody have a good evening.